Regular meeting of the Cave Creek Town Council is now called to order. We have a silent roll call, and at this point, we have with us some special guests, PAC 603, with their parents are here. We had a little get together before the the meeting started today, and they have agreed to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So, boys, as you come up, stand up there. And when you're ready, you can say aye to get us started.
Good job, guys.
That takes me right back to fourth grade. Public announcements, we have several this evening. First of all, PAC 603 was here, and we had a little get together, talked about this. They're doing some achievement work, and I was very happy to participate. Teresa and perhaps others, Beau, thank you for arranging that and doing such a good job. Well, I gave him a little pen, too, so they had a little keepsake about Cave Creek. Joe, why don't you go ahead, and you had this public announcement here?
I was gonna wait until I was gonna go after Dusty up the podium.
Okay.
Your call.
No, you can go wherever you want to.
Yeah, I'll just do it at the podium real quick. Yeah, I'll wait for Dusty.
Okay, we had a couple of things. The easy one first, Mayor Crane and the Administrator for Carefree and Grady and I went to see the Sheriff last week, and we were blown away by his openness. It's hard to get in that place. We had to... There are no doors you can just walk in. You've got to be buzzed into the main building. But we had a very good talk with the Sheriff. He told us old stories going back twenty and thirty years. He was up this area for many, many years. He has... This area up here has a warm spot in its heart, gave us all his personal cellphone number, walks around in a cowboy hat, and then took us for a tour of the dispatch center, and which was truly impressive. I guess, I don't know, they had probably room for fifty people in there? Pardon me. So, it was a... We didn't have any specific issues. We were very happy with their increase in the patrol work that they've done. We're very happy with the quick solution to the shootings and violent cases, the very few that we've had up here, mostly down in the region near Walmart. And so, we've got a pipeline to the Sheriff's Office, and they are our law enforcement agency, and we're... We just told them we were very... Both towns were very pleased with the way the Sheriff Law Enforcement is going down here at this time. The second thing I have is a report from a MAG meeting. Do we have those slides, Brian? The MAG meeting a few weeks ago was a new one in my fifty-year association with air quality. The PM 2.5, which is particulates, fine particulates, used to be PM 10, now it's PM 2.5, and this is a lot smaller than the particulates we had in the past, and we are right now out of compliance. And we are about to move, I believe in May, to a deeper area of noncompliance, which makes us subject to sanctions. And according to the MAG staff, those sanctions would actually make things worse. But they could, they take control of what you're doing. You don't get money for roads, and about half the money for the roads around here comes from the federal government, so it's really important. And I brought some of those slides because they had a meeting, the Administrator, the new Administrator, who hadn't been in office for thirty days, came out to Arizona, and Senator Kelly was in there, and they met with him and the two of them, and gave their presentation on the problems with the Clean Air Act and the way it's being administered. And they had a very compelling argument. It's one of the best... It's the best presentation of technical material I think I've seen, and it's the only time I can recall in those fifty years where there's been a receptive audience in the government and to doing something to about a problem where they... Which I'll show you here in just a minute. So, if we can have the next slide, please, Brian? This PM 2.5 is mainly caused... The areas that we're out of compliance are due to wood burning and fireworks. And so, January 1st and July 4th are really the areas, and to have those two days put us in line for all these sanctions is incredibly... It's really incredible. And the noncompliance area is down along the river in the in South Phoenix. And it's only a couple of days a year, but it's so high that it kicked us out of the good, into the moderate range and where we have these other controls as potentials. Go on, the next one? Yeah, well, 2.5, there's a health hazard, 2.5, it gets into the lungs and it doesn't come back out. So, it is, and it's a very, very... That's 2.5 microns. So, that is really, really small. Go ahead, Brian. And you can see, well, let's keep going to the other slide, I guess those gray areas. Okay, this is a slide that really shows it. It is based on the science that says if you see in the lower left-hand corner decreasing emissions and green down there in that corner, and you can see that the emissions in the in our area have dropped dramatically. And in spite of that, okay, we're... I'm sorry, we're on ozone here, but the emissions of ozone, which is mainly caused by automobile, it's nitrous oxide from automobiles and it's hydrocarbons from refueling or from the exhaust. And you can see that the emissions in here have gone down, down, down every year. Those are those bars that we have there. And the, in spite of that, if you look at the blue line, the ozone has increased, which is a broken science. I mean, it's supposed to go down as ozone, which is the actual pollutant they're trying to control, which is an oxygen-three molecule. And it's actually going back up. And if we go to the next slide, I'll see what it says. Oh, that's the last slide? Okay, well, then I'll just wing it from here. So, there are two problems, the two issues that the Administrator of the EPA and the Senator Kelly was very helpful in facilitating that meeting. Two issues here. One is the science is broken. As your emissions go down, ozone should go down. It's not. It's going, it's leveling off or actually going up a little bit. So, the point was, hey, the regulations are based on faulty science. We need to fix the science and figure out what's going on. The second thing is, a lot of that ozone, a lot of the pollutants are coming in from Mexico and from California, and so we have no control over it. We cannot control from external sources. And in the past, there's something in the Clean Air Act that allows the Administrator to make allowances for this, but they've never been willing to do that for towns that aren't right on the border. And this is the first time that they had the federal government interested in actually solving these two problems. And I cannot remember, and that's why we're here today, is because I was blown away by how this cooperation that's going on at this point right here to solve a problem that doesn't make any sense. So, I'm very pleased with that, and I thought that this is worth everybody seeing, because if it doesn't happen, then we're going to see sanctions imposed on Maricopa County. And that's why the feds give money for light rails and things like that, because they're trying to keep the emissions down and lower from automobiles mainly, although automobiles are so clean now, especially compared to what they used to be. But it, there is some good things going on in the federal government, and MAG did a magnificent job in putting our case forward for both fixing the science and letting and taking into account the pollutants that are coming in from other places. So, that'll take care of that. Thank you. And then I think Joe had something he would like to... Oh, I'm sorry. Did I miss it? We're on public announcements. When do you want to do yours? Yeah, we're in public announcements. Why don't you go ahead and do it now?
Dusty Rhodes, Cave Creek, 41403 North Old Stage Road. I suppose I sit up there, so I'm probably a citizen. We had a number of sidebars last week as we had the discussion on various topics related to water. So, what I wanted to do is share with you what... I talked to a bunch of different people, and I'm going to relay you the information that they provided to me. I don't know if the information is right or wrong. I spoke to everyone off the record, so I'm not going to give you any official quotes like that, but I did speak to multiple people at each agency. Let me go ahead and read the statement. "Over the last few weeks, I've been doing some research on water availability. Rather than try and sift through the reams of contradictory information, I went directly to the people who will oversee the cuts and where they will impact. I've been speaking directly with..." I have been speaking directly with members of the state legislature, members of the Central Arizona Water Conservation District, the board that oversees the Central Arizona Project. I've also spoken with some members of the Corporation Commission about options to alleviate the upcoming shortfalls. The state is facing some very large cuts in Colorado River water in 2026 that will significantly impact available in 2020 availability in 2027. As a baseline information, the initial cut that was recently made was 20% of the overall water availability to cap. The next cut will be an additional 25 to 35%, not of the remainder, but those cuts will be additive in that the total amount of water available will most likely be between 45 and 55% of what was available in 2022 for Cave Creek and other towns. Our groundwater wells can offset a small portion of those cuts, but will still leave us well short of what is needed. Speaking with various experts, I believe that there are three options available to offset our lack of water after the 2026 cuts begin to impact in 2027. The first is the Bartlett Lake Dam Expansion Project. It'll probably take about ten years to be completed, given, and this is according to several people. It'll take about ten years to be completed, given expedited federal approvals, which seem likely at this point. The project has increased in cost and will probably do so at least once more before the final approvals are made. Option two, buy water futures from the Harkaway Hala Basin west of Buckeye. This one's a little bit more problematic in that it could be as many as twelve to fifteen years away, given that most of, given most of the probable, the most probable projections, and that's because there's a number of issues that have to be resolved. There are some legal questions that must be answered regarding potential impacts on Buckeye's aquifer. Buckeye is just the east of the Harkaway Hala. Additionally, the Harkaway Hala Basin has yet to start their ground subsidence studies to meet the ADWR requirement. Those studies are long-term and generally take several years to complete. Assuming that the basin can withstand the removal of vast quantities of water, there will need to be two separate treatment facilities built. The water in the basin varies in alkalinity, most in the moderate to heavy range, once you get past the stuff that's just underneath the surface. Therefore, it's going to require a major desalinization plant, in turn requiring a very large power draw along with the water treatment plant to be able to use the cap canal system to get it to us. Right now, we can buy the futures, but the treatment and desalinization costs are yet to be determined. The final cost per acre foot, according to the experts, was most likely to be as much or more than the Bartlett Lake Dam Expansion Project, just simply because of all the infrastructure that's going to have to be built. Option three is take a look at either selling our utility companies to a larger public utility or to a privately-owned water and sewer company regulated by the Corporation Commission. None of the large public utilities will have much if any excess water after 2026 cuts begin impacting in 2027. Speaking with the privately-owned companies, they are not interested in selling their water rights as they were in years past, but would be willing to alleviate our shortfall if they were given the opportunity to purchase our water and sewer companies. It could be written into the contract if we sold it. Their business model has changed from selling water to wanting long-term customers. The Corporation Commission folks indicated there are four companies that currently have excess water capacity and would be interested in acquiring both the Cave Creek and Desert Hills Water and Sewer Companies, Epcor, Cactus Water, Hearthstone Water, and Global Services.
We can't discuss it, so, yeah.
No, I just hand this. I mean, we can discuss in an executive session, or we can discuss somewhere else. And I'm not telling you that the information's accurate. I'm just telling you what they told me.
Thank you, Dusty.
Thanks, Dusty.
Okay, other announcements?
Yeah, is there anybody else? Teresa or Ryan? We saw, have you keep that as part of the record?
You can...
I'm short of Dusty. Joe Friedman, 40020 North 71st Street. Basically, I'm going to read this to you. Yeah, I think it's pretty self-explanatory. The actual town of Cave Creek has roughly 2,400 homes and apartments slash condos within its boundaries. Many of these structures are in immediate or extreme danger of burning down if a wildfire occurs. As well, these homes and outbuildings are not properly cleared, as well if these homes, excuse me, are not cleared properly of the brush and a dispensable space, it'll be a much bigger fire that'll spread to their neighbors' homes, et cetera. I have also spoken to many people who are not signed up for Code Red and many people who did not even know it existed. Sidebar here, I spoke to a lady on Highland today who's been here three years. She has, she's never heard of Code Red. I sent her the info. Anyway, some people unfortunately have not received the message about this, whether it's through social media, mailings, or through collateral flyers or newspapers. There is no better way to inform people about anything in today's world than to discuss a subject face-to-face like we do here. The purpose, the purpose of the task force is to engage neighbors in person by knocking on their doors to discuss, A, creating a defensible space around their homes of at least thirty feet and any outbuildings such as barns and sheds. To make sure they also know, that's B, to make sure they know about Code Red and how to sign up for it. I think that's pretty vital. Game plan, we have a meeting at six o'clock PM on Friday, April 25th, right here in the council chamber for the task force, which is citizens who volunteer to do this. And I'm starting to get traction on that. We want about twenty to thirty people. You know, the ladies will go out in teams of two, and maybe we'll put some people out there by themselves if they want to go by themselves. So, we want to really cover the town. We'll give them T-shirts recognizing them as official task force volunteers. They'll be given a simple script of what to discuss. We're going to discuss that at the meeting Friday, given a simple, to-the-point flyer to give each homeowner, as well, they all have hanger bags, which are clear in case nobody's home, and they shall be provided with detailed maps of the streets, areas, which we want them to cover. Those will all be highlighted. And again, we're going to do this on Saturday, April 26th and 27th, Sunday, from 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, and we're going to do it the following weekend, May 3rd and May 4th, 9:00 to 4:00. And I'm positive that we can get every house that isn't compliant to be compliant. I mean, again, we're not trying to tell everybody who's cleared their space, hey, clear your space. They've done it, great, you know? And we're also going to tell them about pre-emergent and things like that, so it's not a continuous problem every year. And then Code Red, we don't know if some people are on Code Red or not, unless we get a list from the town or something, but we're probably going to hit up, I'm thinking with the 2,400 homes and apartments, we'll probably hit up about eight hundred to a thousand residents that really need to get this done. And again, I believe this is the way to do things. We're not Scottsdale with 300,000 people. We're 5,000 people. You know, I wouldn't be standing here right now as a representative of this town if I didn't walk door-to-door. It sure seems to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Joe. Okay, we're... Call the public?
I have no one. We should speak? I have no one.
No one called the public, okay? In that case, we're at the town manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and Council want to make the public aware and the council aware of some meetings that are coming up in the very near future. Tomorrow night, we have our council budget open house. This is available to the public, provide input on the budget. It'll be right here in the council chamber from 5:00 to 7:00. And then on Wednesday this week, April 9th, from 3:30 to 4:30, will be a fire preparedness meeting that will be held at the Desert Foothills Library. And this is part two. We did the first one probably about three or four weeks ago, and it was a good event. We had a lot of representation from all the different partners that help us with wildland fires. Be the same type of presentation that will be taking place at the library, so we hope to have a good number of people there as we start getting prepared for the upcoming fire season. Also, we have, starting next week, a number of council budget work sessions, starting at Monday at 3:00, and we anticipate that'll go from 3:00 to 5:00, and then Tuesday, 3:00 to 5:00, and then if we need Wednesday, which I don't anticipate, we will then resume at 3:00 on Wednesday in this council chamber. And I believe that those are also going to be televised, so the public can watch those either on pre-record, not pre-recorded, but actually recorded on YouTube or while it's live. So, that's all I have at this point, Mayor. Thank you.
Grady, just for clarification, tomorrow's budget open house, is council supposed to be present?
No, this, the intent is we will take input from the residents, and if there's any modifications that we need to do prior to the workshop, we will do that. If not, if it's not feasible, or we still intend, when we do our opening remarks to the council, to share what feedback or input we receive from the council, from the employee, sorry, from the public tomorrow night. So, we'll be very transparent about it and share any input we receive from residents.
I just a quick question. Can we get the budget before tonight for the public presentation to review? Are you going to be passing it out at that time?
Tomorrow night, I believe, it's just, I don't have Sheri here, but we were looking at just a PowerPoint that would go through, and then we will put out as part of the packet summary pages that will go out for next week to the council. So, you'll get those this week for next Monday. And I believe there will be a handout tomorrow. I'll see if I can get back to you on that. I don't have Sheri in the room to ask her, but we were planning on having a revolving PowerPoint in the room that had the summary of the budget and the supplements that were being requested, and to get any kind of input and feedback from the residents that will be here.
I just, if we can get a possible copy before tomorrow evening...
We'll work on that. Thank you.
This is your chance to give us a report. I was just wondering if you have anything to say about Bike Week this week?
Well, the... Marshall gave me a listing, and we were going to come back at a later date and believe, is it May 5th, we have a formal presentation to give you some feedback and input, both our observations on number of bikers here, you know, how did it go, if there were any incidents, that kind of stuff. We were planning on doing that on May 5th, but I can informally tell you, to the best of my knowledge, the numbers were up on bikers. We believe there was probably a 25% increase. I know that the mayor had some concerns about moving traffic along. We did have some training in advance for the Sheriff's Office deputies that they would try to aggregate the pedestrians, so they didn't just have one or two pedestrians crossing at a time. But when it was logical, they had a grouping, a larger grouping to do that, and I did observe that on the Saturday during the rodeo weekend that that was occurring. So, but we will give a more thorough and robust report back to council on May 5th.
Okay, very good. I just have one last question.
Sure.
Was it the result of Bike Week that the four-way stop sign fell over or isn't functioning? Yes.
Trailer hit it.
Oh.
Okay, okay. There was a, an elderly...
Just come up to the podium.
One of our mayor councils, one of our elderly residents was at the stop sign, got spooked by a motorcycle. The noise startled him, he said, and he turned into it. He was leaning dangerously, so that's why we haven't moved. But goodness, anyone is ordered and we'll have it fixed.
Okay, thanks, Adam. It will be up tomorrow? Oh, very good.
Okay, we have a presentation, a water system update related to fire preparedness.
Hey, Mayor and Council, we were asked to give you an update just relations to the utilities department. There's been a lot of discussions about fire preparedness. Jim's been leading a lot of charges. We're doing the open houses, but part of the town's fire response actually is our water infrastructure and our system. So, we want to highlight what we've been doing and what we continue to do to make the system more robust. Just talk about, when we did the master plan, I just wanted to point out that we did adopt new fire standards. So, what we've adopted is it's similar to actually what City of Scottsdale has in some areas, where it's 500 gallons a minute for fire flow in our more residential rural areas and 1,500 gallons a minute of fire flow in our commercial areas. This allowed us, when we looked at the system, to actually evaluate where we actually need to focus our improvement. So, this is down from a more typical standards, you'd see a more dense residential subdivision, people like 1,500 gallons a minute. Well, our system just can't provide that, and it would actually take significant, very expensive improvements to try and get that level. We don't think it's actually warranted. Yep.
And Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council, when we looked at those numbers, as Sean said, we came, a lot of it came from Scottsdale, where in 1985, because of the ordinances that you have in place, because the ordinances they have in place, everything built is sprinkled already. So, when you have sprinkled facilities, you're allowed to adjust those required fire flows. So, it's not nearly as intense as it would be in normal areas that don't have that type of protection, which is one of the reasons you were able to do it with the town of Cave Creek from the actions that you took, the town took a long time ago. But that's how we came up with the 500 and 1,500, and it's been, what, 25 years in Scottsdale or more that we've done it, and it's not been an issue for the fire responding folks.
Yeah. Thanks, Jim. So, I'm going to just highlight a few things. I've got sort of five bullet points here, but I slide for each. I'll just actually go through that for brevity. Fire hydrants, so it's probably the most visible element of our system when we talk about fire protection in the water system. So, what does the town do? We, you know, we map them all out. We actually have just under 400, 399 active hydrants in the system. We have 43 out of service. When I say out of service, those are ones that are on systems that we need to improvements. So, Kahava Springs, the 12-inch water line that leads up to Kahava Springs actually has a number of fire hydrants. We do not have the booster station to energize those, and there's some up in our Pressure Zone 9, which actually is tied to our booster station upgrade for the Continental Mountain Estates development. So, we still maintain those annually, but to make sure that they don't fall into disrepair. And we have about 115 fire hydrants, or actually have 115 hydrants in Desert Hills. So, since 2020, we've been doing annual inspections on those, and we've actually come to council and actually used a contractor to do that annually, just to help for our staff resources.
Those fire hydrants you're talking about are in places where there will be residents, but at this point, Kahava Springs, there are no houses up there, and over here, there are no houses. So, apparently, where your fire hydrants are not working is where there are not yet houses. Is that fair to say, for the most part?
Generally, there are some cases, because like the roadway 26th Street going up to Kahava Springs, there's, it goes to a residential area, so they're all marked out of service as they pass through that residential area up there. But generally, they, there are, yes, these hydrants are located where there will be future homes with most exceptions. So, again, doing the annual inspections has had many benefits to us. Again, bringing a contractor in, they can be very efficient. They can do it. Jim's pointed out that it actually has helped our fire ratings.
Yeah, Mayor and Vice Mayor and Council, when we first came out here, one of our issues was our fire protection grading with the insurance industry for the town. And after we made the changes we did on the fireside, and Sean had started his hydrant inspection and improvement program, going back when we regraded the community, we actually increased an entire category. We went from a four up to a three. One is the top that you can get. We went from a four to a three, which was very encouraging when we did that. And that mostly benefits your commercial businesses. And a big part of that was the inspection program that Sean started and being able to track and say, these hydrants now work, we can confirm they work, and they're on six-inch mains. So, him starting that in 2020 has already paid off for the commercial businesses in the town of Cave Creek, combined with what we did with the fire service. So, everything kind of ties together, but that's what, that was a very beneficial thing.
Yeah, in addition to trying to maintain the ones that we currently have in the system, we are looking to see where we could do improvements. We worked with Jim, and we've talked about where we can place new hydrants. One was, we added one on the end of the 12-inch line as it goes up to Spur Cross Road. People might realize as you go up... People might realize as you go up, still about half a mile south of Spur Cross, but that's the end of our 12-inch line. We didn't have a fire hydrant up there, so that gave us access for, in case of an emergency, to deal with that. The bigger system, a bigger thing we're trying to do is actually improve the water system. So as Jim indicated, we have some fire hydrants that are actually on some smaller dam or lines, four-inch dam or lines. That's an issue for us. So we're, one of our focuses has been improving the water system itself, so it can support fire protection. That means I was going out and looking to replace four-inch water lines. We have actually done a couple of successful projects in the last couple of years to get rid of four-inch or smaller lines, in some cases, two-inch lines, Kewauna Place, Tandem Road. And recently, a developer was working on Schoolhouse Road down the military, where we got rid of an existing two-inch line out of the system. That allows us to improve and get six-inch lines in. And if we can loop where possible, that helps us help a more robust water system for fire protection. We're also focusing on booster pump stations. That's where we, you know, well, having a six-inch line or even eight-inch line is beneficial. If you can't get the water into the pump, into the pipes, that's a problem for us. We have a couple of ongoing projects. We have our Pressure Zone 9, which is our booster pump station with Continental Mount Ranch, where we're working with the developer to increase that booster pump station. We have our 38th Street booster. That's a town-funded project, but we have about just under 40 customers currently on a single booster pump station that we really need to upgrade to provide more domestic flow and to allow for fire protection of that area. That's 38th Street, north of Cloud Road, as well as Kahava Springs. Again, that line, north of Joy Ranch Rowne, is not energized right now. We're waiting for the developer, but we're working with them to get the standards put in place, that they will put the boosters to allow us to bring that line live and provide fire protection for the west side of the town, or to enhance the fire protection for the west side of the town. So when we talk about, another big thing is, you know, the town's water system, and I'll talk a little bit later about our reservoirs. We actually do have the town's treatment plant can be turned on and can provide up to 2,100 gallons a minute of flow into the system. So if there is a fire event, while we have the domestic demands and our reservoirs help us buffer those, if we can continue to put water in the system, that is actually a benefit to the town for overall fire protection. And now we have to improve that and enhance that, is actually making sure that the cap pipeline is as reliable as possible. And I caution when I say that, because we have actually had a lot of challenges with that pipeline, the pipeline itself, but more so the booster pump stations, we've been focused on for the last couple of years. We've been doing upgrades to the sites themselves. It was supposed to happen later this week, but it's actually, I think it's been deferred to next week. You'll see some activity in front of Lowe's, where we have our CAP4 booster pump station. We're going to be replacing the individual pump isolation valves. We've already improved our CAP1 pump station, which is at the canal. We've done two and three. Now we're going to finish off with four. What that's going to allow us to do is not just isolate the individual stations. As a problem we had a few years ago is where a pump went down. And to actually isolate that pump, we had to isolate the site. We're actually changing out. And you can see in the picture there, the blue valves are the new valves that allow us to isolate individual pumps. So in case of an outage, if there's only one pump impacted, we can still run the other two pumps and still keep water going up to our treatment plant and allow us to be more efficient in repairing that one. So little improvements like that go a long way. And it's hard working on these booster pump stations, as hopefully that picture reflects. They're very tight confined spaces, very challenging, but we've had a good crew of contractors helping us get this done. We're looking at replacing the motor starters, standardizing at CAP1 and standardizing the motor starters on our CAP2, 3, and 4 sites, as well as doing some things like some vibration tests on the pumps and motors to see. That helps us indicate if the bearings are wearing out, so we can start being more proactive with the maintenance on that pipeline. And staff had done a good job. We're just trying to continue to enhance that. The next big component people will see is our reservoirs. In Cave Creek proper, right now, the two big reservoirs are our Neri reservoir in the town core and our Rockaway reservoir on the northeast portion of the site. It's a challenge for us to manage those, because we, you know, every, from a fire protection standpoint, you think, well, let's fill the reservoirs up and keep them full all the time. From a water quality standpoint, we can't do that. So we actually have to operationally flex them out, but our staff are always cautiously thinking about that. If the reservoir at Rockaway is down, we got to make sure that we have storage capacity or capacity at Neri and that the plant's ready to run. But that's something that we do continue to work on and manage, and the staff do a good job of that. So we do have those two storage, and in Desert Hills itself, Desert Hills actually has four active reservoir sites to help balance out the flows out in that system. And in emergency, we've been able to shut the interconnected 24th Street and allow Desert Hills to actually feed off of itself and its storage reservoirs, not take from Cave Creek. So that's a benefit that our staff know how to do that. And one thing I've talked to council several times about is just mapping of the system. This is a challenging system to operate, because they didn't really have good ass-built drawings. So it's really hard to operate a system when you go in and you can't find valves. Or if you find valves, you're not sure which direction it's actually isolating in the system. So we have a good crew, a staff that are actually continuously trying to work on making sure we can map the system out and understand how it's actually connected, which helps us actually in an emergency to isolate areas or to actually be proactive about stuff. Last project I wanted to point out is just the City of Phoenix interconnect. I think that's a huge improvement in the reliability for the town's water system. It's a new 1,000 gallon a minute water supply connection for the town. So in addition to our water treatment plant, that'll be a supply that we can continually bring in from Phoenix. A new million gallon storage reservoir, and you're seeing a picture from the interior of that reservoir. So you've driven my rate lately, they've painted the roof and the wall on that reservoir. They'll be starting to backfill around the perimeter of it, coming up about five or seven feet on the outside will be buried. And having additional water stores gives us an ability to better manage the system in emergencies. There's new booster stations being installed at that site to allow us to feed. Right now, our Neri site feeds the town core, and we actually use pressure-reducing valves to actually get water down Cave Creek Road, across Carefree Highway, and all the way to Desert Hills. Well, we actually will have booster stations now, so we can feed the system from this site also, so help greatly increasing the reliability. And again, it provides a backup to our Neri site, and it actually will be an interconnect. So when flows are low enough and in absolute emergency, we can actually send water from Phoenix into the rest of the system, so we can support the rest of the system. It's currently on track to be completed by summer of next year. It's really, the last delay is the electrical equipment has been delayed on the site. So we're getting new delivery dates. City of Phoenix will be done with their improvements, they've told me, by the end of this calendar year, which is their pipeline work and their booster station south of, south of town. Per the IGA, they had until like, into January, but they've told me about November, December, they expect to be done. So we're a little bit lagging behind them, but it's equipment delays. Phoenix actually had equipment delays on their site, but they started before us. They actually had the pump cans, and their electrical equipment was delayed on their project. But it's all coming together, so by next year, we should be able to have a much more reliable water system. Or we will have a much more reliable water system and be able to provide for most domestic demands and for fire protection for the town. So.
A question on the equipment. We approved a expenditure for early purchase of the long lead time equipment, and yet it's delaying us. What happened there?
It was, we were wrapping up some of the design, so we, yeah, we did a pre-purchase agreement for just under $1.8 million, if I remember correctly. And we purchased as much as we could that was designed at that time. So we've had some, during the project design phase, we had a discussion about trying to relocate the CAP4 booster pump station to that site. So the main, what's delaying is, is actually the main switchgear on the project. And there was a discussion about oversizing that to allow the CAP4 booster pump station to be brought back up to that site. We can't afford to relocate that, but we went through a process to figure out what the design parameters were going to be. And just in general, the equipment's been delayed, but it's the main switchgear, which is actually, it's about a three-month gap at the end of the project before that'll be delivered. So the project will be substantially complete, we think, by March, and then we'll be waiting on one piece of equipment to energize it. But it's the main piece of equipment, the main piece of switchgear, so. Thank you. Yeah.
Mayor, just a question, Sean, what's the capacity of the Neri and the Rockaway reservoirs?
Neri's operationally is about a million gallons. It's a little bit less than that when you think about the capacities. And then Rockaway is just over 2 million gallons of storage. Rockaway's a challenge for us, just because we're situated, because we actually have to move water up to Rockaway and draw it out of it. So it's a challenge for the system operations, but, yeah.
Do we have any more word or update from the?
Any, any update from the federal government on our $2 million grant?
No, that application has gone in. So we have a $2 million congressional spending grant that is being administered to the EPA. So the application is to the EPA administrators in Region 9, I believe. So they're reviewing it. We expect to hear back in the next couple of weeks, as far as that they're okay with everything that we submitted. We've talked to them a fair amount. We think we've answered all their questions. So we expect to be given the go-ahead to start billing it down. We've actually told them we're going to bill, they wanted a specific scope of work. So we said we'd use the electrical component on the project and the electrical subcontractor work, which is about three and a half million dollars, that we're going to dedicate that grant towards. They wanted a task item to direct it towards, but we're, everything's looking good. We don't think it's going to be held up at all, so it's working through process, so.
Thanks, Sean.
Other questions from council? Okay, thank you very much. It sounds like the town's in as good a shape as it's ever been now, and the future looks bright as far as the water system. But there's more out there, always more.
Okay. Is there a proclamation tonight?
Okay, hey, we're on the consent agenda, and on there is the approval of the February 3rd, 2025 Regular Town Council Meeting Minutes, the approval of February 18th, Regular Town Council Meeting Minutes. And that is it. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 7-0, and we are on to the general agenda. Council consideration, possible approval of a contract between the town of Cave Creek, Cave Creek Rodeo Days and Turquoise Circuit Pro Rodeo to host the Turquoise Circuit Finals at the Cave Creek Memorial Arena and rodeo grounds. Luke, you're up.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I just wanted to let everyone know that Sean left off a very important component in his presentation. About 18 months or two years ago, we had a problem on Matic Road, right in front of the rodeo grounds. The fire hydrant there was really in the travel way of traffic. So Sean worked with us to have that fire hydrant relocated about 12 feet north and out of harm's way and actually widen Matic Road. So kudos to Sean and his staff and all the work he does on behalf of the town. Mayor, this item gives me great pleasure to bring before you this evening. This came together somewhat quickly for government standards. Approximately November of last year, staff was approached about the possibility of bringing the Turquoise Circuit Finals Pro Rodeo to Cave Creek. We had several meetings with Turquoise Circuit Board members, as well as Cave Creek Rodeo Days, because as we all know, they're the volunteer lifeblood that really makes the rodeo grounds go for Cave Creek Rodeo Days and any future events that we would bring to this facility. Approximately January 19th, we met with Turquoise Circuit Board President James Horcasitas, who's with us from New Mexico this evening, and assured me that he wasn't bored at all by that presentation, because he's a retired firefighter himself, so. Also, joining us in the room tonight, Mike Poppenweimer and Michael Frederickson with Cave Creek Rodeo Days. This is, what you have before you is an agreement for a two-year contract for Turquoise Circuit Finals Rodeo to come to Cave Creek for three events over the period of two days in November. That's when the Turquoise Circuit Finals Rodeo takes place every year. It's a culmination of the season. Turquoise Circuit is one of several circuit rodeos that are sanctioned by PRCA with competitions from New Mexico to Arizona, rodeo competitions as part of that circuit. The contract expresses the deliverables by the town of Cave Creek. Really, what I want to bring your attention to is Cave Creek would be pledging a $15,000 per year sponsorship to Cave, or to Turquoise Circuit Finals. And in exchange for that, we would collect our $3 per ticket surcharge, as well as the $150 per day rental of the facility, which includes both setup and take-down post-event. The town also provides, as standard, with anybody using that arena, an attendant, a tractor-water truck. We provide all the desk control for the facility. When meeting with the Turquoise Circuit Finals Board and their production team on January 19th, we discuss things such as arena maintenance and them providing us a schedule and also having someone on hand to do all of that. And then also, where Cave Creek Rodeo Days is involved, is many of the things that they do and bring to the table, their level of expertise with the local area. And that's all expressed in the document. Once again, the town's deliverables are expressly stated in there. And the projections are very good and promising. Just using the recent Cave Creek Rodeo Days as an example of what the crowds that we can bring to that facility include is very promising for all parties. So a great example of a potential win-win-win for all three parties. With that, if Mr. Horcasitas has anything to add, or Mr. Frederickson or Mr. Poppenweimer, otherwise I'll yield my time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Look, Mike, Mike or Mike?
Mike and Mike, come up to the mic.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity. I think Luke explained it pretty well. Mike is chair of the committee for putting everything together and soliciting to the Turquoise Circuit. But all I know is that the Turquoise Circuit will definitely have a ripple effect in bringing more events to the arena. This past weekend, I think a lot of you were out there, we did just over 12,000 people in four days. And I know a lot of those people are rodeo enthusiasts. A lot of them are local. So with the Turquoise Circuit coming, with a lot of visitors coming, which will obviously stimulate the tax base for Cave Creek. But there's a lot of details to work out. I think fortunately, we have a professional we're working with. It's been fun. And I know Mike has put a lot of hours so far in trying to organize all the expenses we're going to have with our responsibility of putting on the rodeo. And I mean, everything from electrical generators, light towers, things like that, that we're willing to commit to put on this event. Mike, do you want to say anything else?
So, wow, if you went out to this last week, I'll tell you what, you missed a crazy event, right? It all started, it all started with us on Parade Day. And again, I want to thank Teresa and the town for allowing us to do the VIP thing here. That was a huge, huge hit. The week kept going. The parade was huge. The cornhole was good. But what blew me away was Sunday, when we had mutton busting out the grounds. It was a totally separate event. First time we've ever tried it on Sunday. I wasn't sure what to expect. We had over 600 spectators on Sunday afternoon watching mutton busting. And I thought to myself, whoa, if this is any indication of what the week's going to be like, hang on. So it turned out to be a great rodeo. James, thank you. There were several Turquoise Circuit people that came through. A lot of PRCA folks were there, and they were, they were in disbelief of what we've accomplished. So kudos to our board, kudos to the town, and we are looking forward to moving on with Turquoise Circuit.
Two comments. Firstly, I know that the town has put quite an investment into the rodeo grounds. It was with the hope of this kind of increase in the use of the rodeo, the benefit to Cave Creek. It's, the investment was well-done, and it's because of folks like you that we have cooped from that investment. Luke, how many years have you been on the rodeo committee?
I served for five years before rolling off, I believe in 2022. Yes.
But you've been a primary contact between the town and the rodeo.
Yes, sir.
People.
Yes, sir.
Very successfully, so nice work.
Thank you.
I just want to make one comment. When I saw those guys changing underneath the stands, literally, maybe we could figure out a way down the road to have some locker rooms with showers and stuff to bring it up even to another level.
I could add to that, and I know Dusty brought it up last time we were here, to get a strategic plan together, which we do. We do have a strategic plan, three, five, and 10 years, and that is to redo the whole Stockman's. And Luke is working on trying to get more land, so we can put an RV park in for contestants. So we're trying to think, just like this year, we tried a new shuttle service. We had some bumps and bruises. Adam Stein's not here, but without his help, it wouldn't have worked. Well, we had a fire that company we started with, and he gave us another company. It worked out just good. I think you took advantage of that. That was something we tried new. We did it on, I think, Saturday night and Sunday, we did over 300 people, just on a shuttle. But the point is, yes, we do have a plan. It's all based, and this year was a record year on attendance and financial. So our goal is there to improve, and it's a great idea. And working with our team, the team is the town and us. So we can't do it without your help. And that's why, after that last comment Dusty had about strategic plan, that's what we went ahead and did. And we're hoping, just like this weekend, we had the Scottsdale Saddle Club come up here. I mean, we're starting the ripple effect, and I beg you to support the Turquoise Circuit, because that'll have a bigger and bigger ripple effect on using that arena out there.
Comments were here? Anyone else? Comments for here? Anyone else?
Ready to make a motion.
I want to add a comment though. I I'm sorry.
Mr. Horcasitas is on the line with turquoise circuit, the president of the board if I think he wants to say a few.
James, go ahead.
Can council members hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Okay, great. Well, thank you, Vice Mayor Royer, Mayor Morris, and all the council members. We thank you so much for just put us taking consideration for us because we are looking for a new home to expand. We were in Camp Birdie for the last four years, Prescott Valley prior to that. And my mission as president now is I want to grow the circuit. I want to grow our rodeos. And with this partnership between the town of Cave Creek, Cave Creek Rodeo Days and the turquoise circuit finals rodeo. I think it's just a like Luke said, I'm going to steal his line. Luke, it's a win, win, win. It's going to help each other grow exponentially. And it's going to bring even better contestants than we've ever had before, because it's only the top contestants from the year end standings of these this circuit. So it's a competition to go to the N F R open to be a national championship. For most of these contestants, this is their national finals rodeo. This is what they work for. These are blue collar workers and women as well, but we in the turquoise circuit have world champions. We have a lot of top contenders in the world. As the Cave Creek Rodeo Days, their competitor list was amazing this year. I was, it was outstanding. So I just thank you for the consideration and I look forward to working with you all.
Thank you, James, and we appreciate you giving us consideration. This is been a real feather, I think, in Cave Creek's hat to have a rodeo of this prestige, and we thank you for the working relationship and what you've done. And wish you all the luck and the the town's behind you. So we've we've been touting it for some time as as one of our great accomplishments, and you were certainly a partner in that. And I have to call out the outstanding leadership that's standing in front of us here today, the two men in black there. The leadership at Cave Creek Rodeo is truly outstanding. You got you put on a wonderful rodeo. I don't think there was a dry eye in the place Sunday. Sunday when we had a veteran of the eighty second airborne who dropped into Normandy, went around, and I'm telling you, that was absolutely amazing to see the reaction. Everybody had had to wipe their eyes. It was something. He was a hundred years old.
Can I say something?
Sure, Mike.
Mr. Mayor.
So my wife and I and daughter took Mr. Cross and his his daughter back to their car after the rodeo event. And we were standing out there in the parking lot talking. And I saw this young man, young boy, about ten years old. He was coming across the parking lot. His dad was with him. I assume it was his dad. His dad stopped off about fifty feet away, and I thought, what world's going on? This little boy continues. He comes up and he kind of nudges me. And I said, can I help you? He said, I really want to say thank you to this man. And I'll tell you what, tears started flowing out of me again. I'll tell you what, because what they exchanged. Priceless, priceless.
Yeah. If you ever want to watch a rodeo, that Sunday performance is has got to be one of the best. So.
We had a good time putting that together.
Yeah, and we're going to have another one. We're going to book in rodeos, P R C A in November, and of course, our rodeo in 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 the spring. We thank everybody for their hard work. Four hundred volunteers see the same people every year, the friendships that are growing. It really is exciting to be around our rodeo crew and the road to Cave Creek Rodeo Committee. James, thank you very much. We appreciate your participation.
I thank you all for your time.
Well, we have to make a motion. You want to make that motion? Go ahead.
I move the council approved the contract between the town of Cave Creek, Cave Creek Rodeo Days and turquoise circuit pro rodeo to hold the turquoise circuit finals rodeo at Cave Creek Memorial Arena and rodeo grounds.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The ayes have it seven zero. James, you got your rodeo.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you all so much. We're excited as can be. We can move forward now. Here we go.
Okay, let's go. Giddy up. Next on the agenda is the council discussion possible approval of a utility easement with A P S for the new electrical service at the water interconnect site with the city of Phoenix.
You're the mayor and council. I'd like to actually present on both items two and three. So there actually is a the most related to A P S's services to the new City of Phoenix interconnect site. There's two separate actions required. Because one is related to land, which is the easement on our property. We're actually picking up the service on the right away in Cave Creek Road, but bringing it onto our property. So A P S requires an easement for that. And the second is actually the construction agreement. What that does is actually pays for the electrical transformer on the site and the connection from that transformer to our main service entrance. That's just under seventy two thousand dollars. So A P S wants us to pay that fee, then they'll do that construction for us and that will energize it. So it's two separate actions, but requires two separate actions because one's land related and the other is construction related.
Is this part of the WIFL loan?
Yeah, she's wrapped into the overall project. So it's one of the towns. We set it aside as one of the town's project costs. We knew what was going to be coming. So we just this it took to this point for A P S to actually give us the the agreement and complete the design. So but with that, I can answer any questions, but.
Questions? Okay, a public comment on this?
I have no public comment.
Okay. In that case, we're ready for a motion. I'll do it. I I move that we that we approve the construction contract with A P S for the transformer at seventy one thousand one hundred and eighteen dollars.
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes.
Oppose? Ayes have it seven zero. And the next one is council's discussion approval utility easement. I move that we approve that utility easement.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I I would like to say this. This is a part of some changes we've made in Cave Creek that not only give us security for water. But I think they also help to protect us from fire. And when you're covered for fire and water, you're pretty well covered. I mean, that those are two huge issues for us. And all of this integrates. It's a part of planning by staff, and it's greatly appreciated. I hope the the citizens understand what the staff has done and how it has helped to protect them from the possibility of running out of water and also for our ability to fight fires.
Okay, the other discussion? That we had, do we have a second? Who's the second? Okay, then all's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion passes seven zero. We're on a number four council discussion possible approval of award of twenty twenty five capital paving capital paving projects to P A P L L C for an amount not to exceed one million thirty seven thousand five hundred and thirty eighty three dollars and fifty nine cents. Mr. Howell.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Yes, we are. We're doing our twenty twenty five paving projects. We bundled them up into six projects that we're bidding out as one package. We received five bids and P A P was the lowest of the lowest responsible responsible bidder. We have not worked with them in the past, so we did check with other municipalities on what their experience was, and we got good and favorable reviews on them. They're out of the Four Corners area and are coming down to maybe do some spring work down here. I did do some comparison of the bid that we received for the paving contractor. I compared it with the bid prices that we awarded last year for our paving contract. At that time, we we awarded about a hundred and eighty thousand square feet of pavement pavement at an average of four dollars and seventy two cents a square foot. This one is three hundred and forty seven one thirty three square feet at two dollars and ninety nine cents a square foot. So we're actually have a lower price this year than we did last year. And that's the all in. That's the striping, the paving, the bid or the bed prep and everything else. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions from council?
Just one, Mayor. Thank you. On the list that you bundled here together, are there any particular ones that have received a lot of public comment or complaints back to the town?
Thirty Second Street and Cloud Road. I I know my maintenance crews have been complaining because they're running out of pothole mix on Cloud Road at Thirty Second Street. We go through a lot of pothole mix there, and so that's part of the cloud road that we're moving back. Also, we've gotten a lot of complaints over Spurcross Road south of Carefree Highway, or excuse me, south of Cave Creek Road between Cave Creek and Military. That's sort of, it was a minefield before, and now it's, I think we have some pavement connected by the pothole mix.
Schoolhouse Road.
Schoolhouse Road. Yes.
Thank you.
Other comments? Public comment?
I have none.
Okay, so we're ready for a motion now on this.
Five capital paving project P A P L L C for an amount not to exceed one million thirty seven thousand five hundred and eighty three dollars and fifty nine cents.
Second.
Cynthia the second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero and run number five, council discussion possible approval award of contract for Cape sealing of thirteen road segments to cactus asphalt for an amount not to exceed four hundred and sixty seven thousand seven hundred and seventy nine dollars and two cents.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is for thirteen segments of Cape Seal. Cape Seal is basically a slurry seal followed by a layer of chips, followed by another slurry seal. So it makes a nice little cake mixture. And we typically put it over chip sealed roads. In this case, we had three bids. It's not as a prevalent for people doing large quantities. They're either very small chip seal contractors or they're a larger contractors, but we did have three. As a comparison, last year, we used a Miracopa County contract that we piggybacked on the town of Carefree. Town of Carefree was doing a lot of work and we paid two dollars and two cents a square foot. And our low bid this year is a dollar forty three a square foot. So that's quite a savings, and we're doing three hundred and twenty seven thousand and change of square feet of of the chip of the Cape Seal this year.
How what's the total length of roadway that we're talking about ballpark?
I didn't look at the total length, but we're probably looking at about four miles. It's it consists of primarily our our work on Grapevine Road going out, which the town of Carefree had done a piece, but the rest of it is ours. Going out from basically great, sorry, Galloway to Eightieth Street. We're doing the Yucca between Yucca Fifty Sixth and Desert Hills to where we run out of right away just before you drop off the abyss and go down into Cave Creek. We are doing a couple other roads that we've that we have scheduled where they've been in disrepair. So that we feel this Cape Seal project or product will handle us very well.
And Hal, as I understand, this is a part of our ongoing plans of looking at our roadways, having them evaluated. This is not a random thing. You're looking at a planned procedure going forward to address what we have identified as we places that most need it.
Yes, these were all out of our pavement management plan and were identified through that study. And meeting our strategic goal of trying to raise our pavement condition index throughout the town and improve our overall roadway system.
Right. And to that end, Grady, I hope we get a press release out about this because people have raised the issue about the condition of our roads. And I'd like them to know that we're pouring a million and a half dollars into it.
We will definitely do that. And as you'll see in the budget next week, that's proposed, we're trying to do some escalated costs to go ahead and do some catch up that the council gave as a high priority in the current year. So we will definitely follow up on your request.
Very good. Thank you.
Other questions? Public comment?
I have none.
Okay. Need a motion then for this one?
Move to approve an award of a contract at cactus asphalt in the amount not to exceed a four hundred and sixty seven thousand seven hundred and seventy nine dollars and two cents.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? Oh, comments, any comments from Cynthia? I have one. I'm just pleased like a bee to see different names or prices. So we're going to get more roads done. So nice work, Hal.
Thank you. And Council.
Okay, we'll call for the vote then. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven zero, and we have no further business on the agenda, so meeting adjourned.